This meeting of the trustees of the La Mesa Elementary School District is now in order. It is 6:02 PM on July 20, 2023. A quorum is present with all board members presenting. This meeting has been duly called and the notice of this meeting has been posted in according to Texas Open Meetings at Texas Government Code Chapter 551. Mr. Ritchie, would you please lead us in prayer?
Absolutely. If you'd bow with me. Dear Lord, just thank you for all of the blessings that you just constantly bestow upon us. And sometimes they go appreciated, sometimes they are taken for granted, but just know that we are thankful, we are appreciated, and we are very fortunate to have you as our Lord. Bless Trenton today and thank goodness he is okay, but watch him as he recovers and just allow him to heal up and get ready to be the positive influence that he always is. Watch over our school, watch over our staff, watch over our board, watch over our students, watch over our community, and just allow us to continue to grow together and be better for you. Thank you for everything you do for us. Amen.
Amen. Okay. I'm going to sign out for the form. I guess we'll now go into the agenda. I make a motion to approve it, President. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Seven to zero. Mr. McNeese, finance.
Ready?
Okay. Mr. McNeese, can you?
No, it's fine.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to let the board know kind of conversation that Mr. McNeese and I had had today. I just want to kind of give him some kudos before we get started. Very impressed with the response that I got whenever I called over to him this afternoon. This morning, I kind of started pulling numbers together to same situation we were in last July, and we all know how that went. And just trying to give an idea of kind of where we're going to end the year coming, the end of August. And I'd kind of already pulled the numbers together, I was just putting his blessing on him. And whenever I called him and I didn't get two sentences into my request, and he knew exactly what I was wanting, and he had already done it, and he's presenting it to us now. But the thing that I wanted to point out, that we really need to listen to in his report, the thing that he pointed out is, y'all remember the numbers that we were looking at, that we were given for current year budget for '22, '23, that was finishing up now. If you remember, we were looking at about a $3.2, $3.3 million deficit. And that was holding true, you know, through the fall. But the numbers he's going to give us tonight, that deficit is not going to be that bad. We're looking at an extra. And you know, there's nothing exact about the job that he's doing with these numbers because it's a moving target. Things are changing. It's an estimate. But you know, the numbers that we discussed that he is going to present to us, it's pretty strong and pretty close. Instead of that $3.2, $3.3 million deficit, you know, it could be as low as $2.5 or $2.7 million. So we've got about half a million to three quarters of a million that we're coming out to the good, which is going to make that decision a whole lot easier. But I just wanted to give him kudos because he, you know, 1:30 in the afternoon of a board meeting, and he handed me every piece of information that he'd already done. He'd already done it, he'd already ran the numbers, and was ready to present tonight. I just wanted to tell you thank you and appreciate the job you're doing.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good job, Ron.
So I pulled a, we have a first report, which is the general fund by function that, you know, tracks all the related expenses. And I decided to work off a little bit different report to create, you know, I always do a little math. So far, you know, at the beginning, I start talking about math, you know, I say I look at it, I do a little math. Well, that's what I did with these numbers to see where we were going to finish, try and estimate where we're going to finish up. So what I took was I took what we had these last 10 months, and I took an average of the 10 months in expense and the 10 months in revenue. And I allowed for the 10 months to count, and I estimated the next two months based on what we had done over the last 10 months as an average. Now, there were some things to consider, but as a rule, it's pretty consistent. One of the, one of the things that I calculated was our average 10-month expenses today, and there were $2 million a month. This month, the total expenses for the month of June were $1.2 million. So we've come a long way. So anyway, that calculated, I add that together, and that's where I came up with the estimated loss of about $2.5 million. There are some variances in there because of income, there's some variances there because of expense. And usually I try to predict a conservative number. So if I had to pick a conservative number, I'd say about 2.7, just to be safe. But I am comfortable with the 2.5. I think that that's realistic. And there are variables. I won't go into the variables, it will just complicate the, complicate it. And Richie and I, Dr. and Mr. Ritchie and I have already talked a little bit about those. So I feel like we're at a good place. And the math difference on the proposed budget or the revised budget operating loss was $3.2 million, and we expect this to be 2.5 approximately, that allows for a difference of about $700,000. It'd be nice to see that difference, and if it works that way. The only reason why it wouldn't is circumstances. We don't know what's going to happen in the next two months, but if we've got 10 months of business, and we do business the same way, but we also know June, July, and part of August is slower, it shows up right now that 1.2 million for June. June was a good month, and I believe July will be about the same. We actually have roomed, based on what we have left in unencumbered, about 1.4 million that we could, that could be our operating losses for the next two months and still be on target. And that doesn't, also doesn't include the encumbered money that we have. Some of that's going to not be spent. So there's some of our wiggle room. I won't go into any more detail, but it just, the key is that it looks like that we're going to come out in a good place, which will give us some options. If we were willing to spend $3.2 million for the year and we come in at $2.5 million, it does give us some opportunity in the next year if we want to do something.
About how much of that encumbered money is not going to be spent, do you know?
You know, it's in Skyward, and I was telling Kevin that I've tried to go in and pin, I've pulled up the screen of the report that has all the covered on it, just to look through it. And I can't, I can tell you that there's a lot in there, but it's not, there's nothing real big. You know, copy machines, what, where we're going to have some salvation is there's some contracts that were set up at the first of the year that we didn't, that didn't complete for whatever reason, or they stopped at the end of the school year. There are some open POs that go through the year for the benefit of maintenance and just certain services that we need so that they can run pickup through the open POs. That's going to, there's going to be money in there. And as you can see, that's $840,000. And we're not going to go through $840,000 in two months. The POs are not going to come through at that amount. So if it comes through at $600,000, we've already picked up $200,000 in expenses. So it feels, with my years of experience and the way that I see the numbers and the way that I calculated the numbers, it's logical, it seems somewhat predictable. The only thing that could hurt it is circumstance that would come up, that would cause us, something unknown or unexpected could hurt the numbers. And I don't know, you know, again, I always qualify it that it is an estimate, the two months are an estimate that you can get real close. Anybody can get closer in their budget if they've got 10 months of actual, and then they look at next year. And there were a lot of things that are going to change next year that we're not going to see in this average this year, which will help us, help us next year in our budget. Anyway, I'll go on in the report. When I looked at the general fund by function, there were, of course, three categories that had an unencumbered balance of a minus, which means they're over. But when you look at some, most of that is just circumstances. It's just part of operations. You're going to have budget adjustments, but we'll be able to reconcile that to recover that through other areas that are over budget. So we'll, they won't wash, but our bottom line won't change when I go removing the money to clear up those negative balances. And I'll do that the first part of August. The next, the next page is the revenue year-to-date. We've got two months left of collection, and I think the biggest part of our collection will be one of our state funds, state installments or state amounts, you know, state.
The lots.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Lots, yeah. And the local revenue for the next two months will be something that I didn't factor in. It's not, it's not going to be very much, we're in the last two months of the tax collection. We're not going to see a lot of money come in through the tax collection. I think federal programs are ahead of, we're ahead in activity over revised budgets, so we'll see a little bit more of that. But as you can see, this past month, we got about $16,000 in monthly activity for federal programs. We still do have, but that holds consistent, that's a pretty consistent number. The next page, I'm sorry, any questions on the revenue? Next page is the monthly capital outlay. There's no big numbers there. The two big numbers are the core switches, $22,000 and $16,000. I thought somebody was going to ask me what are core switches? Because we spent so much money on them. But they are, they are replacements for, for some of the equipment that we currently have, but I'll save the definition.
Did you, did you have to look it up? Is that why you wanted somebody to ask? That's my guess.
Somebody's going to ask me what core switches are. Are y'all ready? A core switch is the network switch installed at the backbone, we have a backbone, of the layered or hierarchy network. These data switches are responsible for routing and data switching at the core layer of the network. So they're very important. So I tried to chase down the technology guys, I said, what are core switches? I want to know what they are.
To add to that, that Jamie has come in and really looking at our infrastructure of technology, and Jamie, who left here, what year, 2012, he is changing things that he put into place. Like every time he sees something, he said, Richie, I did that 10 years ago. And that's technology-wise, you know, technology moves a lot faster than 10 years. So he's done a great job.
Next page is the monthly capital outlay expressed by fund. Those are the same numbers, it just gives you reference to the funds that they came out of. And that's it for the monthly capital outlay. Again, anybody have any questions? It's pretty. So the next one is the monthly check register. I go through this about two or three times, and I just want to highlight over areas that I see that have, that might be an indicator or I might have a question on. And I assume that some of y'all kind of do the same things. So instead of trying to guess what that might be, I'd appreciate it if you would just take a minute and see if there's any questions that you might have about some of the, some of the items that are listed on the check register.
A lot of those big numbers, like when you see on that, you'll see ICEV, you see things like Saxon, you see things like Eureka, those are all the curriculums that we are carrying over for next year. Like ICEV, you know what that is, that's CTE stuff, and then just all of the curriculums we're carrying on.
One thing that I noticed that kind of goes along with this parent transportation is that repair bill on the 4350, that's $6,000, $6,224 repair bill.
Yes.
That right there is a good example of why 34 is in the hole like it is. Whenever we've got those kind of repair bills that we're paying on vehicles.
You know, and I, if y'all want Randy to speak a little, Randy, Randy especially, but Randy and I have been looking at that department, and I think she's got some really good ideas as to how to get that back to where we want it. And would y'all like her to speak on it? Or y'all, Randy, just step on up, sorry, you show up.
This happens every time.
It has, hasn't it?
Yes, it has. So we have talked a little bit, and Ron and I have talked a little bit about how we can track our expenses for some of the vehicles that we have. And so what we've decided to do is put in Skyward what we're spending on every vehicle that we have, and that includes fuel. So we want to track every expense that we have for every vehicle so we can kind of see what vehicles are we really spending a lot of, you know, money on? Are we spending more on this one, are we spending more on that one? And so that we can kind of keep up with what vehicles we're spending more on, you know, or is this one because it's a little bit older, are we spending a little bit more on? So that we can track, would it be better for us to purchase new ones, or would it be better for us to kind of keep what we have? And so that's one thing that we're really going to work on is tracking some expenses on what we're spending on our vehicles so that we can keep up with some, you know, expenses that we've had there. The other thing that we're going to try to do is we're going to try to keep up with when we're idling vehicles, when we're spending too much on fuel so that we can kind of track that, so that we can, you know, keep up with maintenance when we can kind of keep up with, you know, and we want to maintain our routes the best we can so that they're more efficient, so that we're in our routing system that we purchased, and we're using that, and we're routing those to the best of our ability and that they are.
Efficient.
You know, efficient, and that we're routing those the best that we can, and you know, so that we're not going out of our way to go pick up this one kit over here just because they didn't want to ride with this one kit, you know? And so we're tracking those expenses that way also, so that we're, you know, using our fuel the best of our ability, we're using our wages the best of our ability, so that we're not spending a lot spending that sending that driver away out there when that driver could have picked them up. So we have a lot of ideas on how we can track our spending, how we can check our fuel usage.
We've looked on the fuel, we're looking at a way to record everybody, every time someone fills up so we know who's filling up.
Right.
And they're going to have to have a code to fill up. And then, of course, I've told you all, just the fact that we're going to start parking the vehicles at the, at the bus barn on July 28th is going to help us monitor that.
That is too. And then also, you know, like I said, on the idling too, and we have some older vehicles that, you know, when they sit and idle, that does use the fuel. So we've already talked to maintenance about make sure that you're, you know, turning them off, and then the drivers as well, you know, don't leave those buses idling. It's, it doesn't help to idle them, it doesn't get them any warmer or any cooler. The only way you get them any warmer or any cooler is to drop them. So we have to track those expenses because any little bit helps. You just don't.
And it adds up, and it's going to.
It does.
And there are systems in pickups especially, it's bad on.
What'd you say, Ron?
On the newer diesel pickups.
Yes, sir.
It's bad on the death system.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
That lasts hours, by hours, and so it runs it out.
Yeah. So we have to look at all of that.
And I think we've got good plans.
Yeah. I think we have a lot of processes in place that, that we can really track what we're spending, and then just tracking it, I think is going to take most of that. I mean, you know, if you're not knowing, if you don't know where everything's going, you don't know what you're spending. So I think if you're keeping up where everything goes, and you're saying, okay, well, this costs more, and this costs more, but hey, we can, we could save here, I think tracking it is your best line of defense.
Have we looked at any, any GPS boxes?
And that was another thing that I have not brought up with, Mr. Ritchie, but I have in the past had, you know, GPS on anything, on everything that I've had.
Well, like the ones, like the company I work for uses, after 30 minutes of idling, the supervisor gets an email.
Yes, and I've had that, I've had that.
We have big problems with our death systems.
Please, in the past. And it also tells you how fast they're going and.
They'll do collision alert or run stops.
Yes.
We get in.
It has it all, and it even tells you if they, you know, like, like Juan thought somebody was on their phone, but they were actually just eating candy, you know, because they reached down. So yeah, it's got all kinds of stuff on it.
That sounds good.
It's not as bad as you really think it is. I mean, it's really not.
It depends on how we have, like a small place, 95, a fleet of 30 or 40, it's probably 90, 85, 90, a truck.
Yeah, it's not bad.
Let's look at.
Do we have a rotating plan on vehicles and.
We're working on it. We're literally working on it today. Got some of it right there.
Yeah.
It, it's been out of, that hasn't been in place for so long. We're trying to figure out the best way to restart it, you know, because we've got several different divisions that I think it needs to happen in. And we're just, we're looking at mileage on everything, we're looking at repairs on everything, and going to figure, all right, where are we going to get the best bang for our buck to start it so it can trickle down to all the.
Randy, it's from the other dogs, too.
Oh, yeah, I got.
It didn't happen overnight, so it's not going to get fixed overnight, but we're, we're really working on a plan, and so I think we can get it where it needs to be.
Sorry, Randy, I promise next time.
It's okay. Don't pick up. I'll just be ready, right?
Thank you.
Okay, so the monthly check register, I'll move on unless somebody has some questions. The next item on the agenda, there are no donations, there's no budget amendment from three and four. And five, we do have an item over $50,000. I think you have any questions to that in the code?
It's the library stuff, Ron kind of talked about last.
Yeah, that's something, $160,000 invoice for furniture fixture in the middle school library, and we talked about a portion of that being covered by the.
Insurance.
Insurance provider. And also, part of the goal in what we did was based on the comparison to what the high school has. So they tried to design something somewhat similar to that. So that also is why it's $160,000.
How much of insurance does that cover?
I don't, I don't know. If I'm going to guess, I'm going to say probably 50 to 60% because we're upgrading, there's some upgrading in there, so we might get 50% out of it. Because they do have to replace what was there, and that couldn't be, that couldn't be, 50% could be comparable to what was already there.
There is, if you'll turn to page B, there is another that will be $50,000. We just can't tell you how much. If you look at, it's ESC 17, Contracts for Educational Services, that's a yearly rollover. All schools have contracts with the service center that range from accountability to financial to leadership to federal programs to your PEAN's help. I mean, it's, some services they charge for, some they don't, and you never know how much each one's going to cost. But it, the cumulative amount will end up being over $50,000. And when you know what is for sure, we'll let you know, but.
That's actually an annual event. We do this, we do the contracts every year, so it's consistent with previous years. What usually happens is we go through what we currently had this past year, make sure it's something we still need, and then we'll talk about what we need to add on for the new year because of some of the shortfalls that the district needs help with, so.
And honestly, we've been paying and not really putting the service center to as much use as we should, and they knew it, and I think I've told you all that. And they, I believe, Mom and Ron, I think both of y'all have met with them, I think they've appreciated being invited back out to help us out.
They unfortunately gave us second number six.
Okay, the next item, number six is the budget timeline. So the reason why we didn't have a meeting before this meeting was because there's really not been anything changed. Right now, we're waiting on, we're waiting on some deadlines to come about so that we can receive information. I think you see it, July 25th, there's an attachment that's got some orange highlighted, that's the TESB, Association of School Board Members, got some highlighted dates down there, and I'm just going to run through some of those dates to give you an update on what we are. July 25th is the deadline for appraisal to approve our certified appraisal role, so we're waiting on that till the 25th, so we'll have, instead of guestimates or the number that they previously provided, it will be considered a certified appraisal role. So we'll be able to plug those. And on August 1st, it's the deadline of tax assessors to determine district property values and submit appraisal role to the, to the board. August 8th is the deadline for TA to issue the preliminary maximum compression rate, and that's, there's value in that because that's the number that we will plug into the template to help us determine what our MNO tax will be. So we do have to wait on that. And once those dates get here and we get that information, we'll update our template, and we'll be ready to prepare a budget that we would like for you all to vote on. I will say that in this process, one of the things that has not changed is the total amount of money that we've, that we've been funded. What we, what we base that on is our ADA, some of our student needs, and that's been established. What we're working towards right now is what we need to wrap up with is how much our property, what our tax rate's going to be and how much money the state's going to pay versus what, what we would pay with local taxes. So the money's already pretty much established, it's just a matter of going down to which portion of that is going to, or how much the portion's going to be for property taxes and what's going to be for, that comes from the state, and that's how, and this is how we establish the rate to do that. We think it's going to be, we know it's going to be less than what it's been because of some of the changes.
Yeah, and Ron and I were in on a commissioner's call today because, you know, they just now passed a property tax relief. I'm sure everybody's been seeing it. Commissioner's still TA, nobody really knows how much, how it's going to affect yet, but it is going to result in lower property taxes, which that's, that's a good thing. So the state will fund more because the property taxes are going to drop a little bit. We just don't know quite yet how it's going to look until they set these deadlines.
So the next workshop, we're not looking at until after August 5th?
Yes, ma'am. I think anytime that next week, we'll have a lot more solid information.
And really, we're not necessarily voting on what we think that, we're not going to really change the bottom line, our buckets, where it's going to be. All we're trying to do is get to a point where we do our MNO computations, we know what we're getting to pay, what money we're getting paid locally. That's all we're trying to do is pin that number down. That's where we are. See. Notes that we may want to try and do this possibly the week of August 7th through August 10th?
I'm going to, when we get to the fall board dates, I'm going to kind of give us some options on that. So we're good on that one.
And there are a couple of other things that we still need from the budget. We still need a little bit better payroll estimates, and I'm waiting on a quote for our property insurance so I can, I have an adjustment in there already, but I want to confirm it, make sure I'm putting a good number in there so that it's either higher or equal to what's proposed. And payroll's the same way. I'm not going to wait around, if I have, I don't want to wait around for that number. When the timeframe gets closer, I'll, I'll take what I can and try and get it closer based on the information, the updates that we have for payroll. So we're, that's it. We're waiting on those particular things so that we can move forward.
Any questions for Ron?
Thank you.
I did think of another one. Back on the check register, the allocation cost that we pay to present district, is that, do we pay that quarterly or do we?
Yes, full payments.
So we're paying the cost of $5,000 quarter?
Yes. Yes, and I, last week, they gave me an estimate about three weeks ago, but this week, just a few days ago, I got one in the mail for the estimate, and it is now going to be, it went up, and I think it went up about $8,000.
Oh, my God.
So, yeah, it's, it's quite a bit of money.
So $8,000?
Yeah, it's a combination.
Not by quarter, but.
Not, it won't be effective on this one, I think, for looking at.
Sorry, next year's, next year's budget. That's a combination of appraisal fees and collection fees. There's two amounts involved in that.
So we're pushing $200,000 a year.
Yeah, if it's quartered.
This, this come out forty-seven five fifty eight?
Yes. It's gonna be fifty-two thousand, almost fifty-two thousand.
Fifty-two thousand per quarter?
Yes. And I think, I think, oh, the next item is the cafeteria adult meal plan or prices. Last year, we went up twenty-five cents on, on both the lunch and the breakfast for adults. This year, we're proposing to go up on the lunch twenty-two cents to make it five dollars even for the adult lunch. And for the breakfast, we're gonna go from three, it'll be three twenty-five, and it went up twenty-five cents last year. So we wanna propose three twenty-five for breakfast. That's eight cents over what it cost us. And we wanna propose five dollars and it currently costs us four seventy-eight, which is twenty-two, twenty-two cent increase for this. There's small increases. We just round them up. If we leave it like it is, we're gonna end up paying that twenty-two cents and that eight cents out of our pockets, so.
And if there's no student lunch price, 'cause all of our kids eat free, so we don't have to worry about that.
So that's, that's for your information. That's what we're gonna be doing is just bumping those up a little bit to get them to an even number and to cover our costs.
Thank you, Ron.
You're welcome.
And the breakfast is good. I'm gonna reintroduce board. I'm gonna reintroduce Mike.
Make a motion to have breakfast presented.
Um, favor. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
For those that weren't in the room, Mike, come on up. Mike is that beautiful bus out there he brought to show us tonight. And he's done a presentation to the board already. He was here for about twenty-five minutes prior to, so this will be shorter. But it'll also be a chance, if you've had questions, kind of contemplating, and you've seen it, this is a great chance to ask him. Thank you.
I passed out some brochures. I believe you've got a proposal from our salesman for this area for the SE one oh two. Is that correct?
He, he gave these numbers, which I shared with Mr. Ritchie, but I didn't share with anyone else.
What are we talking about?
The, remember just the.
The quote?
Yes.
Is that the only quote you got?
Yes.
Y'all wanna, y'all wanna share that? Did you share? Carol, no, I'm just.
I can give them mine.
Yeah.
That's the one you gotta blow on, so. I, I didn't bring the SE one oh two because I've had this bus at the conference down in Houston. So if you're standing in the passenger cabin behind the driver's area looking back, the two buses are the same. They look the same. The difference between the two, and the reason I'm going over this is the proposal that was sent to you is not for this bus, it's for the other one.
Other, without.
Okay? Of course, you can have whatever you want if you choose to do this, but.
She said that was about fifty thousand dollar.
Yes. And the difference between the two, like I explained out on the bus. This one has a bigger powertrain. In other words, bigger engine, bigger transmission, it's a little heavier chassis. But because of the entrance door being moved forward, we were able to add more seating. And the bus is six inches taller and that all went in the luggage. So the inside area where the seating is, is identical to the two buses. The luggage is different on the SE one oh two. The doors hinge up as opposed to the way this one works. And it's about twelve percent from a total cubic foot less than what this one is because of that six inches difference in height. But the layout is the same. It's got the six point seven liter Cummins with an Allison transmission, which is probably what's in your school buses, just a little higher horsepower. This one has a nine liter with a bigger transmission. So whatever proposal you received. The salesman that worked with her was with me, but he had to fly home because of some family health issues he had to attend to. So I don't have a copy of that proposal with me. But the bus out here is about fifty thousand dollars approximately more than the proposal that you received. And not knowing the date of that proposal either.
It was a while ago.
Just a rough estimate.
Yeah, it was not a, it was not a proposal. It was just kind of.
Okay, well, the SE one oh two is.
Yeah, I got you.
It, it's gonna be a little less than three fifty and, in the three forties, three forty-five to three fifty in that range. With everything that comes standard.
And that's for the, which is that for?
For the SE one oh two. For the bus that's sitting out here, the D X L, it starts at around three ninety-five. That would be plus any options you wanted to add to it.
So if we wanted graphics, you know, with tornadoes and everything on there, that would be something we would have to do back home?
Yes. And if you're interested in that, then I could have the people in my graphics department talk to you, get your ideas. And they could put some, uh, uh, different ideas together, put them on the side of whatever bus that you're interested in. So you could see what it'd look like and then you can make changes to your happy and they can give you all the prices. They've got a portfolio of I don't know how many of these things.
Do y'all, do y'all paint that or is it, is it a wrap?
Uh, we do both, but most of them is vinyl. And just to kind of give you an idea, the type of bus that you have now is what we just call an activity bus. It's a Bluebird, which if it were painted yellow and added flashing lights and stop signs and so forth, you could use it for a route bus. And so Bluebird and Thomas and International, that's how they create their activity buses, which can't be used on a route. And I sell both. The activity buses are a lot less expensive to get into brand new. Right now, we're seeing quotes anywhere, depending on options, between two hundred and two hundred and fifty. The difference is, and we're happy to sell either one if somebody's interested. The difference is total cost of operation. For one, let's say you had both of them for eight or ten years and wanted to trade them in on something newer and nicer or whatever. That activity bus would not be worth much of anything. I don't know if you've had experience selling your old used school buses, but they become scrap metal. Because there are so many school buses dumped on the market every year, there's no market for them. We take them in trade a lot, but it's just giving away money because they sit on our lot and a lot of them go to the scrapyard and we get literally scrap metal prices for them. This, though, at that same time, would be worth dramatically more. We just had a school traded in some eighteen models for one of the newer ones because that was that older A C system and that kind of thing. They wanted a new one and they got close to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars traded. So in other words, you factor that in, there's not that much difference from a total overall cost of operation between the two. Plus, we've had a number of schools tell us because of the extra seating capacity and luggage capacity, they were able to eliminate a second vehicle. Or pulling a trailer or whatever, which means you're not having to pay another driver. So we still sell all the school buses, the activity buses, the motor coaches in addition to the ultra coach liner. And we're happy to do any of those. And I can speak to any of those or answering those questions. But are there any questions? I don't wanna do a lot of.
Field mileage of these?
I'm sorry?
What kind of field mileage are these getting?
Uh, this one's going to kind of be in the seven and a half to eight mile range. The other one does a little better, actually. It's pushing closer to ten. Don't know why, but it's not my expertise. But that's the feedback I'm getting from transportation directors.
The one oh two's shorter?
The one oh two is about six inches shorter overall height, just at the top of the H vac unit. One other advantage on the bigger powertrain in the D X L is the engine's rebuildable. Where a six point seven liter is a great engine. They're everywhere. I have been for quite a while. But they're really, it's not a sleeved engine, so it's not really rebuildable. The engine in this one, it's not unheard of to see them out there five, six hundred thousand miles. The other one is in more three to four hundred thousand. And that's if they're taking care of it well.
So the, the D X L's gonna hold its value better and last longer?
Yeah.
It has also proven to have better resale. There are more of the SE one oh twos in Texas than the D X L, but the, they were out two years before the other one. So I didn't have the D X L when a lot of the Texas schools were buying the other one. Some of them now have added DXLs to their fleet in addition to the other one. But I still sell about fifty fifty. Some of that's because of price. You know, if you, the typical activity bus is not gonna get very many miles on it annually. If you're just going on activity trips. From the feedback we've gotten over the years, some of them are as low as seven, eight thousand miles a year. The ones who have really a lot of long trips are doing twenty, twenty-five thousand miles a year. Either way, it's gonna last you a long time. So the body on this one, because of the way it's built, I sell other, what I call a shuttle bus. On a Freightliner chassis that looks a lot like this bus and it's quite a bit less expensive. But it won't pass that high speed rollover and it doesn't have all the safety stuff built into it. There's a reason that we don't market it to schools. I wouldn't want my kid in it seventy-five miles an hour down the highway. But they are less expensive, you know, hundred thousand, hundred and fifty thousand dollars less, but there's a reason. Though, those shuttle buses are built to, to beat the low bid because most of them are bottom bid. The, the ultra coach liners are engineered to be a twenty-year body under commercial application, which is everyday use. And that's not what schools do. So it can sit during the summer and not affect it. The motor coaches like the Greyhound buses can't do that. And that was the biggest problem that Texas schools were having. And on one of my lots, I've got three long rows of those old motor coaches traded in from Texas schools. I don't know how many we have. It's a lot. And I've sold maybe five of them in all these years. Sold three of them to the country of Belize and it's now their transportation department. They came up and drove them all the way to, to Belize. They came out of Andrews. They were ninety-eight model motor trucks, so they were excited about them. So we broke even on those. The rest of them, it's just, you know, we can't take those to the scrapyard, so we just hate those. But anyway, any other questions? I'm assuming you realize that i- if you're interested in referrals, you probably know that tons of them are around you. Lots of schools have them. So they'll give you the good, the bad and the ugly. And the good, bad and ugly, or rather, the bad and the ugly were from the first couple of model years. It was a model S E that we don't build anymore. That's why now there's an SE one oh two. It was all upgraded. We don't build that one anymore. But that was the one that we were having trouble with the air conditioner and a door. We fixed all those and we're just not getting the bugs anymore. It's still a machine and machines have issues, but it's, I'm sure you can talk to, for example, Big Spring has five and.
Five of which one?
They have the SE one oh two.
Okay.
And we, well, if you'll talk to them, they'll speak highly of it, but there were some issues when they first got them. We stand behind them. We set up, Ultra Coachliner is a brand, right? Chevrolet is a brand of G M. Ultra Coachliner is a brand of national bus sales. It has its own warranty department and we hired somebody who had been with Daimler, who owns Freightliner and Mercedes. He would been, he was on the Mercedes side for a lot of years. He is over the warranty. So they actually just sent, we have mobile vehicles for Ultra Coachliners. To Big Spring, went through all of them. They are just thrilled and he has actually probably, he personally sold seven of them for me. He called me up with another superintendent in his office saying, hey, this guy needs some information. But that's how much he sold on our service after the fact, so.
And does the color of the seat play a factor in the price and, and what are we looking at?
No. I've got those two standard colors. And I buy those in large volume. We have them custom made for us by a seat manufacturer in Europe. And so I buy a container load of them at a time to get a good price. So they look expensive, but because of the volume, we get the price down. So if anybody ever wants a different seat, even if it's not as good, it'll cost more. So I can do any kind of seat, but there's either that black and silver or the other one's a two-tone tan. And there are some of both, obviously, running around. Those are not leather. It's the highest grade, what we call leatherette. Because we want it to be easy to take care of. It's not porous, so it doesn't stain. And there's easy, just mild soap and water. But that's what that product was made for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, thank you so much for coming out. We appreciate it.
You're sure welcome. Anything that we can help you with, just let us know.
Do we need to drive back home so you can leave that, that here?
Well, absolutely, if you can drop me at the airport.
We'll get you a flight out of here.
Be sure and let us know if you do start selling one. Four price and a second, I'm gonna pack off.
Yeah.
I would like to say this one last thing, just, and this is gonna sound like a salesman talking, but I'm not a salesman. I'm the general manager of the company. I oversee the brand. I helped design the bus. All of my proposals, I had them start putting at the bottom of them. This price is only good for two weeks. And the reason is because of all these supply chain issues since COVID. We have had price increases hit us that were not fair. We had signed contracts and then it'd show up and they would say, well, now it costs you five thousand dollars more than it's gonna cost. Well, we got a contract. Well, if you don't want it, we'll sell it to somebody else. So we got stuck because we weren't gonna turn around and raise the price of the school. So we lost money on a lot of buses. So I had to change that. So the reason I'm telling you that is we still get regular price increases by surprise. And I've had two in the last three months that totaled eleven thousand dollars, my cost. I'm actually making less money per bus now than I did when I started. Because we're trying to control this as best we can. If somebody's got an answer to all this supply chain thing, we'll run you for president. It's, it's frustrating. I've never done business that way. I wouldn't do business that way. But if it's something you wanna do, the quicker you do it, the better. And I've got a number of schools that got their proposals a year ago. And it didn't fit in that budget and they're trying to do it now and they're shocked at the difference in the price. And I'm making less money than I would have done it a year ago. So just throwing that out there.
Thank you.
Tell me again, I'm sorry. Tell me again, kind of, and I know you can't do a firm timeframe, but about how long? Not going to hold you to it, I mean...
I told my sales guys to say eight to 10 months. And the reason is I would rather tell you 10 months and get to you in five than the other way around. Because honestly, I don't know.
How often do you run until a deal where a bus gets almost completed and somebody backs out, so you have one for sale?
It's never happened. I've got a deal right now with a Texas college that is wanting to buy one of my, I take that back, no, I take this college, it's a Texas professional sports team. They're wanting to buy one of my demos. And now he's talking about backing out because of the delivery time of what he needs. And I can make a phone call and sell it in about five seconds. There's that many people looking for them quickly. Used ones do occasionally turn up, but the only way, I've told school boards this, the only way you're going to get one of those, and the last one I got only had 40,000 miles on it. It looked brand new. But schools work too slow. You know, schedule that board meeting, and you gotta do this and that. And the last one I had was sold in six hours. So I tell school boards, if you're interested in something like that, go ahead and pass it that the superintendent has the ability to spend up to X number of dollars. So that if one comes available, hey, here's a BO. But other than that, you don't have a chance. I've got a list of customers saying, as soon as you have something available, call me and I'll take it.
How much is a demo anyways?
It depends on the demo.
Just depends?
I load the demos up with a lot of options, like this one, it's got a restroom in it, which you probably don't want. It's got some other trim cosmetic type stuff, which you may not want. But anyway, realistically, you would want to think in the 400,000 plus range, plus or minus a few thousand. And if you're going to do graphics, the average Texas school has probably spent somewhere in the $10,000 to $12,000 range for vinyl graphics. They've spent $800, and they've spent $18,000. But I tell them all the time, if you don't want to spend more than $3,000, tell them, hey, what can I get for $3,000? And you can do it that way. But you can factor all that in as well. But you'd see what that looks like before you make any decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
My turn?
Bob Spikes, y'all have heard me talk a lot about how we're looking at how we can conserve energy. Looking at our meters, looking at electricity, looking at lights, just trying to figure out where we can save money. And Bob and I go back to 2008, he was my boss, and since then, he's retired, and he works for a company called Mantis Energy, and this is about his fifth time here. And he has spent today, I mean, I don't know how long, we got here at 2 o'clock today, just going through our meters, looking at our usage, and trying to figure out how he can help us. And I just wanted him to kind of tell y'all what we've been doing and kind of what we're planning on going with this.
Okay, thanks, sir.
All yours.
All right. First of all, thank you very much for serving in one of the most thankless positions in town, I promise you. This week will be my 30th anniversary as a school administrator, had I not retired in February. Took my first principal job at 26. And this is, I just finished my 35th year in public education. I'm surprised you still have hair. I've got a spot right back here, brother. What ain't turning gray is turning loose. But anyway. Well, the funny part is when Richie worked for me, we, I teased him all the time, because he never drove anywhere. But he didn't walk either. And the field house was about five, six blocks from the high school. He taught in my building, I was the high school principal, I served a 17-year sentence in that capacity. And Richie was the football coach and teacher for me, and he bounced everywhere he went. Kind of looked like Tigger. He never, never drove anywhere, but he didn't walk either, he bounced. Anyway, he is a great guy. Thank you, number one, for being Lemisa ISD, every student, every day. That is a fantastic motto. And that's one of the reasons I got into the electricity business, was because when I was sitting in that chair, one summer, our electricity contract was up like in a year later. And I was getting about, I don't even know how many phone calls or emails or something a day. And they were all from the best broker, and they could all give me the best rate, and they could all give me the best deal, and somebody was blowing smoke up my skirt. So when I got involved with this deal, I saw how that, this company saved my little pitty school district, I had 102 students K through 12 as the superintendent. Served nine years in that little gig. But they saved me a third of what I was paying for, to buy electricity. And I thought, holy smoke, I mean, that's pretty significant. So that industry is full of some not very nice people that do some very dishonest things and tell you all kinds of twisted things. And I decided right then, I told that guy, when we got through, and I saw how it saved my district some money, I called him and I said, you need to come see me personally. And he said, okay, but why? I said, well, because I can see retirement on my horizon. I know everybody in West Texas are those people, I don't know, I'm not afraid to introduce myself and say, if you'll let me help you save some money on something you have to buy, I'll be glad to help you. You don't want my help, that's okay, we'll be friends next week at the Dairy Queen. And I said, and you're too pushy for people in West Texas, you need to go back to Waco, brother. Because, I mean, he's a nice guy, but he's too pushy for West Texas. So we have just finished doing what we call a UDR, which is a usage data review for Lemisa ISD's electricity. As of today, you have 30 meters that you're paying a bill on. And boy, I was fired up, because I was going to get to tell you, I'm going to save you $27,000 a year, or $83,000 over the next three. And that's not true anymore. Because one of those meters that was off-contract, that you were paying an exorbitant rate on, we're going to call them tomorrow and tell them to disconnect it. Because you don't need it anymore. It was on your portable building that you used to have at the junior high, sitting in the parking lot.
And that's...
It's no longer there, but it's cost you through the nose for the last 12 months. And nobody realized that, because nobody's done a usage data review. And that's the first thing we do. The company I work for, that's, I mean, I work with, I don't work for them, I'm an independent contractor. I don't save you some money, I don't make a penny. But the main thing is to help you save money, because if I can save you 100 bucks, that's 100 bucks you can spend on a kid. And that, that's why we're all in the school business, or sitting in those chairs you're sitting in, is for kids. Me included. I just changed chairs. But you had 30, you still have 30 meters until we disconnect some. Mr. Ray and I found about four more on top of that one.
Well, for instance, our federal building, which is condemned down here. I mean, we've been paying on that for however long, and the lights were on the other day, and I haven't, I mean, I didn't even know there were lights in there. So we're cutting that one off, just things like that, that have never really been looked at.
And that's the very first thing we do, is, number one, we analyze your usage. Is there a way we can help you with that? Is there a way we can issue a better price on that purchasing, that procurement of that electricity down the road? Mr. Richie and I are working on that. Y'all are under a contract until 2026, June of '26. And you're paying four point something, almost a nickel a kilowatt right now. That meter at the portable building over there, we were paying 15 cents a kilowatt. Because when they set that up, TXU didn't bother to say, oh, gosh, y'all have a contract, you use about 2.7 million kilowatts a year, we need to include that with that other contract. No, 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 they didn't do that, they just charged you what they would have charged you anyway. And it was, I mean, it's not anybody's fault, it just happens. But anyway, that's one of the things we do, is we do an analysis of your usage. Another thing we do, David and I talked earlier today, there's a, there's some equipment, well, I'll try not to go into a whole lot of boring details. You guys are on the tail end of deregulated Texas. O'Donnell is deregulated, north of O'Donnell is regulated. They don't get a choice. They get an electricity bill. They don't get to decide where from, who they want to use. Congratulations, here's your electricity bill, and there is no shopping anything. Okay, that's, that sounds really cool, the downside is, and I have to put it in terms I can understand. I understand water flowing through a pipe or a water hose, and you guys are at the tail end of deregulation. So all these solar panels between here and Gale cause all kinds of congestion problems, and they make your electricity more expensive, because it provides congestion in those transmission lines. That's what they call nodal charges. We don't do nodal charges, we add a little teeny tiny bit on your rate and say, we're going to guarantee the nodal charges. It's part of what we do to help people know exactly what you're going to pay. There's no, no variables in our business, we don't believe in that. Anyway, so not to bore you with that, because you do get some of the, we call it transient energy, which is, for lack of a better term, the foam on top of your Dr. Pepper when you pour it in your cup, it fills the cup, but it's not very usable when you get ready to drink it. Same thing, it's coming through that meter and it's costing you. We're looking at some equipment that could possibly reduce that foam as it comes into your system. We hadn't got that far, because our company is not even yet an authorized dealer for Texas. This piece of equipment is brand spanking new in the United States. And I can show you a little video, but we won't bore you with all that. It's good enough that the guys that I work with are investigating, how do we get to be a dealer? So we can help people use it. Because it's in the bottom line, it helps the consumer at the end of the consumption chain. That's what we're all about. So let's see. We're going to disconnect about four meters that you're either not using or underusing right this minute. We're looking at, you have several meters that are what we call power factor issues, which is what I was talking about, that's the foam. You're paying, just take a random number, you're paying for 100 kilowatts of usage, but you're using 60. But because you used 100 one month, they're going to bill you for 80% of that for the next 12 months, because that's the way the law, the law works in energy. They did that to protect the REP, which is the retail provider, and that's great. I mean, it keeps them from, keeps me as a consumer from having one city lot with a camping trailer on it, and all of a sudden, I've got 57 reefer trucks sitting there running refrigeration units and paying some ridiculously low rate. That's why the, they call it peaks and valleys, peaks and ratchets. We looked at several meters today that you guys are paying really, really, really outrageous ratchet fees on. Working with Ray, working with David, working with Mr. Ron, to try to figure out, is there a way we can reduce that and use those units more efficiently, those meters? We've talked about, for example, if you've got four multi-ton units, like in a gym, if they all come online at one time and hit the grid for one, one impact at the same time, drives your peak usage through the roof. But if we stagger those as a starting time from one at 5:00 AM, and one at 5:30 AM, and one at 6:00 AM, then you don't impact the grid with that massive load at once. So your peak lowers, and well, you're paying a lower bill for the next 11 months on that particular meter. Ray is looking at how to program that on y'all's computer software that runs all your HVAC stuff. Questions?
It's an overview, y'all have heard you kind of talking about it, I just wanted y'all to quizzing. He knows a lot more about it than I do.
I don't know about that.
I've learned a lot, though, I have learned a lot.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, I've learned a lot since I got involved about five years ago.
Just a buy-in too, from the employees, once the plan's implemented.
What's that?
A buy-in from employees and the whole...
This is about to be an initiative for us, Ron, and I've told them, I came from a district that, if you didn't turn the lights off, you was getting a phone call, and it's not been something here that has been a focus. You, me and you talked, Mr. Tulic, about those checklists for teachers, teachers leaving refrigerators on. Told them you could probably walk in a room right now that hasn't been used since May, and the air conditioner's running. We're going campus to campus, and then once we start, the last person out of the building, custodians and principals are going to be responsible for making all the lights off. We shouldn't be driving by buildings in the middle of the summer and see the lights on all the time. Just things like that. I think that even though it might be a nickel here, nickels everywhere add up to a big chunk of savings over time.
Well, just, just those four meters that we, Ray and I talked about with David earlier today, we're going to save, save the district about 600 bucks a year on that, just because you're paying for a meter to hang on a pole, but you're not using. So why? But more importantly, I mean, that, that one meter at the junior high was, holy cow, you, I mean, y'all were paying an astronomical rate. And TXU and Encore didn't bother to say, hey, by the way, y'all aren't using that, let's take it down. That's generally not their MO. But anyway, okay, so no questions from anybody? I have one for y'all. My name is Spikes. The baseball field or softball field, some over here says Spikes Con...
It was not named after you, Bob, sorry. Sorry.
I have one feeling left, brother, and you just jumped up and down all over it. How is it named for, really?
Joe Spikes.
And he was?
Coach.
Wasn't he a local coach?
A coach?
While back, while back, yes. Not Bob.
How long ago?
Does he want to be Joe Bob Spikes?
And he got far back.
Oh, he'd be really far back.
Before you?
Oh, yeah, before, really. I think, I think he was...
Way before '70s.
Back in the early years, when he said, he said, semi-pro baseball.
It's just not that common of a name. So I was, when I drove by there, I was like, wait a minute. There you go, hey, thanks.
He's very, Bob is very excessive, and he, it's just helped a lot. I mean, and I think he's in it for the right reasons, and I know that because I worked with him, so I knew he wasn't selling me a bill of goods. So I appreciate you, great man.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for serving. I'm out, brother, I'm heading east. All right. I will holler at you tomorrow, Dave.
Guys, Dr. Nelson is now still in training, and so I'm getting kind of a pinch hit for him. The next thing you have is concerning, and Rebecca's in on all of our safety and security meetings. It's concerning the film that we've been talking about for a long time, that we've been doing our estimates and our quotes on. I will read you, Dr. Nelson's pretty thorough what he typed, so I'm going to read you what he typed and then kind of expand on it. The Lemisa ISD Safety and Security Committee is recommending board approval for the quote by NGC to provide security window film in compliance with Texas law and updated safety standards. The completion of the recommendation is one of the many steps designed to create safe environments for our students, teachers, and the staff members who work on our campuses and across the district. Then, this is an important part, because I think we get so busy, we forget that the funding for this project will be related to the 2022-2025 School Safety Formula Grant. It is recommended that the Board of Trustees approve the recommendation to engage with NGS to complete the scope of work the LISD Safety and Committee has recommended. And if you look, we attached a list of all the schools that this company's working with. This company was not the most expensive quote, it also wasn't the cheapest quote. The most expensive one, guys, was so, so far out there. We had $200,000 from this grant, and we would have maybe been able to get through one building with that, whereas this company, we're going to be... Whereas this company, we're going to be able to get all of it done. Uh, when we met with the committee, Chief Peterson, Ron, your old law enforcement, he said, if you can give us three minutes, we can get there. Uh, and they say three to eight minutes is what this provides you. If they're, if they're very aggressive, three. But if, most times, it'll give them up close to eight minutes. And I feel a lot better about us when we have eight minutes of time to protect our people. So, uh, we're working on more of this. The plus to this is also there's going to be a little money left in the grant. And we're looking at putting panic bars on all of our gates. And we've talked about that. Our gates are great at keeping people out. Unfortunately, they also keep all of our people in. There's no way for them to get out swiftly. And so that's the next step. Once we do this, we're going to see what we have left. And we've already started getting quotes on, uh, the egress bars and the panic bar.
What's that looking like?
It's going to be more expensive.
What's that looking like?
Uh, what do you mean? As far as where, there's seventeen of them, and it's going to be about seventeen hundred per panic bar. Yes, sir. That's about where it was at earlier today. And then we're also looking at, if we get that done, extending over at South. Of course, y'all know South has the old entrance. That part of the building is not very secure. And they came out and we think we can extend the fence out a little bit to help secure South Elementary a little better. Where they broke in, just that old part that nobody is ever in. And so a window could be broken for days if nobody knows.
The south side of it? Okay.
By, by the, the ground we're going across, all across the way. Um, like I said, Rebecca's been in these, we've seen videos. Um, this, the, the grant you have, and I know we've said it, you had to either have it in the door or adjacent windows. They didn't let you stretch out. We could do this last, and if there was a window on a window, we could do it, but we couldn't do those with the grant. Does that make sense? Because they're not adjacent. And so we were able to, to help every, every school. Some schools were easier than others. High school has a ton of windows and a ton of doors. But, uh, I think, I think this company's going to be able to get most of it done. And I still have a lot of money left on it. We're excited about it. Questions on that? It is going to come up in the action item here in a little while. Okay, thank you. Think I'm still up, but I need to get my notes. Um, and after the gate, we also are going to look at getting Knox boxes. Uh, better equipped Knox boxes if we still have money left. Um, okay, so on, not on the agenda, but he is here as I start my report. Mr. Carrera, you might have come up here. I am extraordinarily excited. I was excited when I hired him. I'm way more excited now that I've gotten to be around him. Uh, Israel Carrera, uh, new high school principal. The question everybody's going to ask is, why are you a high school principal? And I'll just let you answer. Because he's been everything. And I cannot tell you how excited I am for him to be a part of our administration, so.
Good evening, Board President Gonzalez. Good evening, Superintendent, uh, Richie. And members of the school board, I appreciate this time to talk to you. I'm excited about being here. It's all about kids. It's all about giving them the opportunity to be successful. I've been a principal, assistant principal, superintendent, assistant superintendent. Recently, I just had a, a good friend of mine that really got me into administration building. His name is Dr. A. Marcus Nelson, and he passed away about a year ago. But he was the one that brought me in. Had no plans to be in, in, uh, in administration. My, my hope was to be the head football coach here in Texas, a big school, and then go into an A D. at a college level. And that was my plan. But the good Lord had some different plan for me, and so he got me into this. And so when he passed away, I went, stayed close to his wife and his kids. And I said, you know, I'm going to take a principal because I don't feel like I've done the best job that I can at, at the high school at the classroom level. So I'm going to try to finish out doing that and dedicate it to Dr. Marcus Nelson. And so I'm excited about being here. I'm excited about working with the kids and the teachers. Every kid I've met, they seem very respectful, very, um, very enthusiastic, you know? I just wanted to make sure that we as educators give those kids everything in their toolbox that they can do whatever they want to do. When they walk out of high school as a graduate of L A S D. High School, they can determine what they want to be, not anybody else. They can go to college, they can go to trade school, they can go to the workforce, they can go to the military. They can do whatever they want because we have supplied them with the tools that they need to be whatever they want. And that's my promise to you that I'll work hard every day to make sure those kids are taken care of. Any questions or comments?
Well, we appreciate you coming here and being a part of our team.
I was born and raised in Artesia, you may just go on.
Oh, okay.
Texas back into Texas as fast as I could.
When he says he works hard all day, he means all day. What time do you get up in the morning?
I get up at three forty.
Were you in the military before?
My son thinks that, that's what happened. I used to always get on to him. I used, like, there's a video out by a Navy SEAL that he gives a commencement speech for Texas, University of Texas. And he talks about the first thing that you can do to be successful in the morning is make up your bed. And so I used to tell my son that all the time. Son, can you just, just make up your bed? It's not that difficult. Just, if you do that, at least you know you can come home at the end of the day and you've done one thing that's right, that you have a bed to come home to to sleep in. And so now, he, he, he didn't go straight into the, to education. He, he went to the workforce. He figured out that that wasn't the way. And so he went to the military. And so he just graduated last month in boot camp in San Antonio. And he said, Dad, can I take you somewhere? Sure. He said, you know that deal about making up the bed? I said, yes, sir. He said, everything you've told me, these drill targets are telling me again. Did you talk to him? I said, no. I never was in the military.
Love his thinking.
Yeah.
Start of the day, I promise.
He does, and he's like, they, they measure how far this has to be and how tight it has to be. Like, you had it easier with me, right?
Right.
That boy was brainwashed.
We appreciate you coming here.
Listen, well, I appreciate it, and I look forward to it. If there's anything that I can do, if you'll just communicate that to Mr. Richie. I want to say Dr. Richie, maybe someday he will be Dr. Richie.
Maybe.
And, uh, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to work here. I look forward to it, and I'm very excited about it.
Well, thank you for wanting to come here.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Uh, I've got several things, guys, going down here. You have attachments for quite a few of them. Uh, and a lot of this is just to make sure you have the information. It's not necessarily anything that has to be decided tonight. First thing is your fall board meeting dates. And I was focused on August. Mrs. Gonzalez, uh, reminded me that, you know, August is a busy month. And so I look, I always look back at the last three years, guys, to kind of see what you've done in the past and what, what the board's done in the past is half. Because you're going to have to have two. Because we have to have our regular meeting, and then we're going to have to have our, uh, budget and tax rate hearing meeting. And what they've done in the past is move the regular one up a week. Not have anything the week you normally do, because that's going to be the first week of school. And then come back that next week and have the budget and tax rate. And of course, the budget and tax rate is much shorter meeting typically. So that's the proposal. I am always open to whatever you guys want to do. The other reason to move it off that first week of school is, guys, we're going to have meet the tours on that Thursday. Uh, there's going to be a lot of stuff that we are going to at least try to be at, want to be at. And I'd hate for us to be in here when we can be out there supporting the kids. So that, that's why I proposed those. While I was doing that, I went ahead and just looked at the whole calendar just for fall. I figured we can then do the same thing when we come for spring. And none of that has to be decided, but just to kind of guide you through, uh, you know, I'd rather, I'd rather kind of get a plan ahead. That way, we can put it out there when we're going to have them, and if anybody wants to attend them, we can. So nothing to approve, just kind of look over it, and we can brainstorm and figure out the best, best thing to do. Um, next thing, and you have an attachment for this, Tasby Convention. I am excited about it. Uh, obviously, I've never gotten to go. And, um, I think that Burnett has been taking names, correct, of everybody interested in going?
I only have three.
Do you have me down?
I don't.
Yeah.
Ernest, April, and Rebecca.
And Kim.
Yes, I have them.
What, y'all both missing work?
I want to tell them not, she's right about.
Everybody's going.
I'm excited, that makes me happy. I think it would be a great time to, to get this thing, get this thing going. Uh, we can all take one vehicle? I think we can all fit. If y'all are light packers. I'm a light packer, I do not know. Okay.
We'll have a, I mean, best.
No, we, I'm telling you, we may not be able to because Dr. Nelson is not a light packer. I've seen, oh, goodness.
We'll take the new bus.
Yeah, sorry, we got plenty of room on that thing.
You know, and if we all do go, we may have to take two vehicles.
We can take two. That way, we're comfortable. I think that's probably fair. That way, you don't have to worry about how much baggage you bring. Uh, so I'm excited. Good, I, it's very exciting that everybody's going to attend. Okay, so the next thing we have on there, guys, legislative overview. I, I know I get wordy, so I tried to abbreviate, but there are some things. The property tax relief bill is the biggest news that's come out of the legislature. And they had a special session. And again, Ron and I sat through a commissioner's call today, and even they don't fully know how it's going to affect everything. They do know simply it's going to lower the taxes for our community and not affect funding. So whatever it plays out like that, I think that's a win-win. And I think that's going to be a good thing, uh, for us. And like he said, T E A. publishes our maximum compressed tax rate August third. So even if we want to have a second meeting, just a budget workshop meeting, we don't need to have until after that, that week so we can have it. So we have all our info, uh, after that. There is going to be another special session, and I've mentioned this, they are right now are going to call it in October. And, um, I think this is before you came in the room, Ron, but the commissioner said there already is more funding in what they're going to talk about. It just hasn't been passed because the governor hasn't signed it, and he's not going to sign it until he goes in October. So we're going to get good news in October. I just think it's a matter of how much good news. Uh, and it is still tied to school vouchers. And if you keep up with Governor Abbott, he doesn't speak any day without pro, without promoting school vouchers. So I think we're going to get stuff, and then it's just going to matter how the negotiations go. And is public school going to give in to an extent and let them start the vouchers to increase our funding? Is he going to give in and finally give up the fight and say, no more vouchers? And separate and, and fully fund public education? We don't know, but we'll find out in October.
Let's hope that happens.
Let's hope it happens. I, I, I'm worried, Ernest. Uh, I think it's a real scary time to be a teacher. I think it's a real scary time being an educator because in essence, vouchers, vouchers widespread is the first move to, to totally dismantle public education. I mean, let's, let's just be honest about what it is. It's taking taxpayer money and giving it to, to private institutions. And it is the first step in completely altering the landscape. And you'll see some states, I think it was Arizona, they, they're already out of money. They passed a voucher thing two or three years ago, and they already can't afford it because it's not sustainable. Um, I don't think it affects us with kids. I don't think we're going to have a massive, massive group of kids head out and go to private schools. But it will affect them. There's no way it doesn't affect them. I can see private schools starting to pop up. Uh, a church, if they know they're going to get some money, that could turn into a private school right then and there. Uh, the frustration for us is that there's no accountability, you know? Uh, we've got star tests, we've got special education federally. They are literally just going to give them money with no strings attached. And I just do not, flat out do not agree with them.
I think the U I L. started it by allowing them into the.
They did.
Into the sports.
They did.
I mean, that's, that's the first step in.
He is in the minority, the problem, and it's the problem in all of life. He has a lot of people behind him that have a whole lot of money. Um, and unfortunately, two of them are West Texas oil guys. There was an article in the paper not too long ago that they started. They, they have supplied the bulk of his funding, and their goal is, I mean, as I, they say in our, our goal is to totally do away with public education. Now, do I think we'll see that in our lifetime? I, I don't. But it would be disappointing if it even started to go that way. Because it is for the minority. There's, it is not for the majority, and there's no way you can tell me otherwise. But October's when that's going to happen. But that bleak message is followed by, we're, we're going to get some help. We just don't know how much, okay? Uh, House Bill Three is the school safety bill. You have heard a lot about that, especially at our safety and security meetings. Uh, the biggest thing about that, relative, and it, we're, we're, we're ahead of the game on a lot of stuff is you now have to have unarmed guard at every campus. Uh, you know, that sounds crazy to us because we do, but there's a lot of schools that don't. You know, I was talking to your wife earlier today about the guardian program out there. And it's interesting because they don't, they don't, Commissioner, again, he doesn't know how the guardian program's going to play into it, but we're, we're good on that. Uh, I'm going to touch on something else with S R Os here in a minute. Uh, and then the only other thing, this was good news. They did pass a House Bill One Six Zero Five that is going to go ahead and give us six, now it's a year late, but we're going to get sixty dollars per student extra if we use state-approved curriculum materials. And that sounds crazy, right? Why wouldn't schools be using state-approved? But I will tell you. Mom, and have we been? We have not, okay? But we are now. And that TEAC certification you saw a couple of weeks ago, we have gone to great lengths to, everything we've got is narrowed down, commissioner-approved. So we will get sixty dollars per student. It's just going to come, it's retroactive, it's kind of, uh.
One time a year?
No, sir. It's, it's, it's not every day, no, sir. But, but it is every year. And he said something that didn't totally make sense to me. He said, every year it goes up sixty dollars. And that didn't make sense to me, but he said, so you are hearing me right. So next year, it will be a hundred point. There's no way that can keep adding, but I'm not going to say no. You know, so that, that was good news, and I was excited about that. Now, this one, this last one I'm going to talk about because I think it's really interesting, the Senate Bill Twenty-One, Twenty-Four, and it is passed. Students to score in the top forty percent on their fifth grade math score, okay? Which I'm hoping we're about to really see academics rise, so our number will go up. You have to offer them advanced math now in the sixth grade, okay? So I remember the days of algebra being offered in middle school. I, I took algebra in the middle school. I didn't take it in sixth grade, but I did take it in the middle school. That's what that would mean, okay? So that is in effect next year, not this year. I like it, though. Uh, I, I think if you start exposing our kids in middle school to high-level math, it's only going to help us when you get to the high school, and they've got to take that E O C. test to graduate. Um, so you probably didn't know that. So we, we will have to figure out how to man that, how to, how to put kids in there because, uh, I, I just think you take advantage of that. I think anytime you can give a high-level anything to our kids, you take advantage of it.
So is that optional, or is that something that's integrated?
You will, you have to offer it. The parents can refuse it, but we will have to offer.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, ma'am. Um, and then the only last thing on my guys, uh, my thing, guys, is, and I attached it today. I emailed it earlier in the week in, in response to a request. I, I don't think we are ready, in my opinion, to act on any kind of compensation plan. And I don't think we need to till August now. I do think we need to do it in August. And I just wanted to make sure we had the most up-to-date information about kind of where we're at. Um, if you look through it, the most important pages to me are where it tells you what anything we do would cost the district as, as a whole, if that makes sense. So, um, I think we'll have some meetings, some budget workshop meetings. As I said, Mrs. Gonzalez, after the third, once that tax rate's been through. And that's, you know, with this information, we can probably have some discussions on that. Any questions about any of this?
On, on that payroll, the current books that you're looking at right now, we've got one and a half in there right now, right?
Yes. The, the one that we, yes, sir. And it's tricky, and I, I, I explained this to Mrs. Martinez the other day. 2023 exists, 23, 24 doesn't, right? I mean, and the only way it's truly going to exist is if you take 22, 23. And I mean, there's not going to be a report because there's, there's nothing to generate it, you know? So you kind of just have to eyeball it if you want to see different, different, different. That's why I like this report, because you see the big number. And that, that, overall, that, that, that's the number that will matter. Any questions on any of the stuff I talked about, guys? You don't get to ask. You know, I love you, right? I'm going to stay up here, guys, because I, I do have the first, uh, well, all four of these. Is that okay, Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes, ma'am.
You're done with that? Okay, so our first one, our SRO agreement, we talked about it last time. We've got it signed by everybody. We made one change. Um, and we changed on the first page, you do have this in your attachments. One, two, three, four, on the fifth, whereas before this, it said the city desires to provide to the school district up to four full-time police officers and we made it up to five. Uh, whether we do it or not, I wanted us to have the ability to do it. And he's already in the process, we got some people coming in to visit with us very soon. So that's the only change on it. Uh, and I, just judging by what we discussed, I thought we were all going to be in a dream.
Yes, absolutely.
So it's signed, Mrs. Gonzalez and I, we need to sign it tonight. If you guys approve it, but that, that's, that's your number one right there.
Okay, does someone have any questions or do you want to go make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the, the fifth SRO.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Now we.
The next one on this is number two and three, guys, kind of go together. We will have to separate them, all the action items, but number two, deliberation and possible action to approve T-test appraisal calendar for 2023, 2024. That is not something that we create, it is something the state of Texas creates and we follow it. But you still have to approve it. I think it'd be best if we acted separately so we don't kind of confuse, because I am going to explain the second one a little more than the first one because the calendar is what it is and we really can't veer from it. So if we want to kind of focus on number two and then I'll, I'll kind of talk about number three.
Okay, so the, we have a consideration and possible action to approve TTEs, T-test appraisal calendar for 2023, 2024.
I'll make a motion, show her.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, so moving to number three, deliberation and possible action to approve T-test alternate appraisers. For 2023, 2024, I will not lie, I think that next year we need to remove the word alternate, alternative from that. I know that's what it's always been. It's really just a list of appraisers, a list of appraisers for the district. The way every school will work, every school does work, is you get appraised, and I'm going to kind of go into this in a little more detail. You get appraised by the administrators on your campus. Now, that's changed greatly over the last few years because, um, it's been who does it, who, the principal always does it. In some years, we had our assistant principal do it. I think there's been some years we've had our curriculum people do it. It's really hard on, in my opinion, for our curriculum people to evaluate a teacher because they are the one coaching the teacher. And to me, that, I think that's a, I think that's a colliding of interests. And so what we've done the last few years is separated out. And I will tell you the way that we've done it, um, and the campuses that have spoken to me over the last few years, as I went from campus to campus, they've all done it, they've separated. So the principal evaluates your core classes. Your principal is going to take your ELO, your math, your history, your science. Your assistant principal then is going to pick up the electives for the most part. At the high school, it's easier because we have a lot of electives at the high school. At the middle school, you have to kind of divvy it up. At the elementaries, you literally just kind of split it down the middle. I try to never evaluate the same person two years in a row if I can keep from it because I think it's good for that teacher to have different appraisers. Now, a question I get that I've never encountered as a principal is what if I get evaluated by somebody I know doesn't like me? Right? First off, we try to avoid that because a good principal knows the relationships on the campus anyway. But that is in essence where the word alternative comes from. If you look at the attached list, the first two on it are Gregory Nelson and Janie Ballman. So what every district does is they have basically appraisers in the bullpen. So if I evaluate Kevin Tulchik and Kevin Tulchik thinks I treated him unfairly because of something outside of school, he can request an alternate appraiser. That's where these guys come in because they are removed from the situation. Never has happened because again, I know my teachers, I know our relationships and I do a pretty good job and I think we all will of making sure we're evaluating the right people. I also want to add this, though, this has totally changed with TIA. Because now that we have teacher incentive allotment, which y'all know we had three teachers get it last year, the T-test plays a role in that. It is not the dictator of whether you get it or not, but it does play a role in that. And so it's much more important that we as an administration make sure it is done thoroughly and done right. Because we do want our teachers to be acknowledged for TIA. I would love for them all to be because it helps you every single way. It gives you more funding and it gives your teachers pride, it helps you with everything. But I also don't want to just have people get it just to get it. I want to make sure we do it right. And so you have to be trained every year, you have to be recertified every year to do this. So they've all done it, they're all certified. And that's a lot of work to, that normally you probably wouldn't get to just make sure we approve that we have enough people in the district to do our appraisers. Questions?
Will we have to come back in on if there's somebody?
If we add somebody? Yes, we, we will have to act on that one, yes, sir. And if there's a chance, I go ahead and add myself in there if we have to redo it. That way I'm handy in case we're needed.
Okay, I have deliberation and possible action to consider and approve T-test alternative appraisers for 2023, 2024.
I'll make a motion to purges present.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, and then the last one is my late, my least worried, it's a part of talking about. It's the, uh, the film for the security window, the security film for the window that I, that I spoke about. Do you have any more questions on that or are we pretty good on that?
Okay.
So fourth, we have consideration and possible action to approve the bid for more window security film and NGS, from NGS.
Make a motion, we present, we, except us presenting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, guys.
Now we have executive session allowed by Texas Open Media, I consider this as personal. Texas Department of Health and Public Health Session, 51074. And now it's 7:30.